Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Black. United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the MSD Pike Township School Board Meeting, April 24th.
Good evening.
We will go and get started with our, for the good of the cause. Any patrons would like to use three minutes for the good of the cause. You may start by stating your name. All right. Moving on to Spotlight on Pike, Ms. Sarah Dorsey.
Good evening. It's wonderful to see you all again. As always, we have a lot of great things going on in Pike. On Tuesday, Pike High School hosted an Earth Day celebration, which featured several student clubs and community partners, including our partners with Resilient Pike. In addition to providing guests with an opportunity to learn about caring for our planet and enjoy time in nature, it was a wonderful opportunity to interact with the animals from our Advanced Life Science class, fish, and explore our beautiful outdoor lab. So we want to thank Mr. Polarski and our Pike High School Science Department for making the event possible, and all of the families and community members who participated and came out to enjoy it. And we got some great news as far as data goes today. From May 2023 to 2024, Pike again saw a 7% increase in students scoring a 3 or higher on AP exams. We saw an increase in the number of students taking the exams and also an increase in the number of exams taken. Additionally, our students scored above the state average in nine AP courses and above the global average in two AP courses. So we're extremely proud of them for that. And we want to congratulate our undefeated Pike High School Boys Golf and JV Baseball Teams. Congratulate our Girls Tennis Team for an outstanding start to their season. They're currently five to zero in wins in their two MIT contests. And we also want to congratulate Jay Brown, who was nominated for, and appears well-positioned to be named the Indy Stars Track and Field Athlete of the Week. There's still time to vote until noon tomorrow. You can cast several votes, but when I just checked, she had 6,602 votes and the person in second place had 767 votes. But we've got to keep going. We also want to congratulate Catherine DeKine, who was awarded the NFL Player Association's Professional Athletes Foundation Scholarship Award. The scholarship was awarded to one female and one male student in the city. Eligible students were required to be athletes with a 4.0 or higher GPA who demonstrated a dedication to academics, athletics, community service, and school involvement. In addition to this scholarship, Katie and Chase Shern will also be receiving a prestigious scholarship from the YMCA this weekend. So we look forward to sharing more about that in the very near future. On Sunday, May 4th, we'll be celebrating our Academic Top 30 and two outstanding alumni Hall of Fame inductees. They are Coach Ashley Barlow and Dr. Andy Shern. So we look forward to sharing more about that. And we'll also be celebrating them in the Indy Star in an ad that's scheduled to run on Sunday, May 11th. Last but not least, we'd like to sincerely thank the generous donors listed on this evening's agenda. Brandy Aguilera donated $5 to Lincoln Middle School's 6th Grade Field Trip Fund. Alan and Sally Mills in Barnes and Thornburg each donated $3,000 to support our Teachers Appreciation Celebration. Books-A-Million donated an estimated value of $5,000 through their annual summer book drive. Jonathan and Marcy Martin and Tom Wood Management both donated $500. And we received an anonymous $100 donation to support Pike High School's Keep Hope Alive Scholarship. At the Pike Township Education Foundation donated $11,000 to support our teacher appreciation celebration, $80 to fund student activities at Lincoln Middle School, and $148 to support Pike Ignite. So we are extremely grateful for this generosity in support of our district and students.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. Next, we have reports to the Board, Alumni Excellence, Dr. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board, for another opportunity to highlight a Pike alumnus that's doing amazing things in their professional career. This is an opportunity for our current students, future students, as well as the community overall, to really see what a Pike graduate looks like. I'm really excited that this afternoon, or this evening, we have an opportunity to highlight Dr. Justin Sanders. His practice is in South Carolina, so he could not be here tonight, but we do have a video. Thank you.
My name is Justin Sanders, owner dentist here at Sanders Dental Studio. Graduated high school in 2012. And from there, I went to the Skigee University in Alabama, where I received a full ride scholarship. And then I ended up going to dental school in 2016 at Howard University College of Dentistry. So I'm a big HBCU advocate, two-time HBCU graduate. I've been wanting to be a dentist since I was in the third grade. Back elementary, I had a teacher who wanted us to do a kind of a college fair project where we had to shadow somebody, shadow a profession. And I didn't know what I wanted to be, so I just knew I liked going to the dentist. So Dr. Austin, my dentist in Indianapolis, allowed me to shadow him a day. And that day changed my life because ever since then, I wanted to be a dentist. My senior year, a program where I was able to create hours going to IU School of Dentistry, just going there three days a week for about two hours at a time and had to build a portfolio and track my hours, presented, and just learn the whole ramble of dentistry. And I actually held on to that when I was through undergrad and finally time to apply for dental school. I brought it back out and said, hey, I'm not in it for the money. When I was in third grade, I didn't know the value of a dollar. I still wanted to be this. And they really enjoyed having over 200 hours of shadowing from high school, which the average person doesn't have that at all. And they said, hey, you're serious about this? I'm not going to stop you during coming to this. When I graduated in 2020, which was a pandemic year, I went to work with a corporate office and then was there for a year. And then I was in downtown Charlotte at South End Dentistry. I always knew my goal was to open my own practice. And so I opened this practice this past August, which is a long journey. But I'm actually having my ribbon cutting celebration in about two weeks. So it took a village to help me get to where I am today. I didn't do it by myself. It took a lot of work, but can't say just me doing it. Can't take the whole credit for that. Mr. Dobb's helped me out a lot. I know even in situations where I wasn't necessarily a great student. I had great grades, but I was also a class clown, which helped me out in the future, being able to communicate with patients, make it uncomfortable. So that was me, making people laugh, making them comfortable, having fun. There's always a time and place for everything. So Mr. Dobb's kind of helped mentor me. I got in trouble in class and seeing me in the hallway, he would take me to his office to coach me up. And that really made a big impact on me. When I left Pike and I went to Skigee, like I wasn't top 25 at Pike, but when I got to the school, it really showed me how good Pike was for other students because other kids weren't the same academic level, if that makes sense. So allowing us to, like I told them I wanted to be a dentist, they gave me the opportunity to shadow. I think having those career fairs and people coming in, giving us opportunity to see different things, other than what we see on TV, other than what parents do, with my parents are real estate. So challenging us to find something that we want to do before we get to college. And I think that played a big role on me strengthening my resume and my love and passion for dentistry.
Well, we, as always, we are always appreciative for our alumni to come back to set the example for our future students and alumni. So thank you to Dr. Sanders on his accomplishment and also sharing his example. Another round of applause for Dr. Sanders. Next, we have Winter Sports Recognition. Oh, sorry. You want to do it now? Before we get into the Winter Sports Recognition, we have a statement by our Vice President, Dr. Webster.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. By way of show of hands, how many student athletes were aware of our Sports Mental Health Summit? By way of show of hands, you a student athlete, how many of you were aware of our Sports Mental Health Summit this past Monday? By way of show of hands? Thank you. By way of show of hands, how many parents were aware of our Sports Mental Health Summit this past Monday? Thank you. Thank you so much for that, Mr. Anderson.
Next, we will have our Winter Sports Recognition, Dr. Hunter.
Mr. President, members of the Board, Dr. Young. Today, we are gathered here to recognize and to celebrate the exceptional achievements of our Winter Sports students. It is my pleasure to introduce the Athletic Directors, who will in turn introduce the remarkable student athletes they have nurtured and supported. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Blake Arnett, the Athletic Director of New Augusta North Public Academy, followed by Ms. Kendra Champion-Macaloon, Athletic Director at Pike High School, who will introduce their phenomenal Winter Sports students, athletes, that have represented their schools with pride and passion. Mr. Arnett.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board, and Dr. Young. Thank you for the opportunity to come and recognize our athletes this evening. The first athlete is a 7th grade wrestler. He was undefeated this year in his weight class. He finished the season as MIC champion. And we're very excited to see how he follows up on that next year as an 8th grader. Please welcome up our 85-pound MIC champion, Joseph Tyson. The next group we'll recognize this evening is our 8th grade Girls Basketball Team. This year, they finished as MIC champions, Mary County champions, and undefeated. They were also undefeated in their Fall and Summer Leagues this past year. During their season, school ball season, they won all their games by an average of 38 points per game. They really dominated in every way. With that being said, it won't surprise you guys that they, the vast majority of them play very high-level AAU basketball. They have very big showcases this weekend. They'll be represented in Pennsylvania, Ohio, and South Carolina. So they were not able to be here tonight. The three remaining who do not play AAU basketball are all running track for New Augusta this evening at Belzer. So I will run through their names real fast. Ariel Bacon, Gabrielle Bellamy, Kyla Demings, Malia Evans, Lenaya Jackson, Jemiah Jones, Savaya Mitchell, Malia Moore, Darian Wiltshire, Ryan Winston. And although you guys won't get to see them this evening, they will all be at Pike next year, so get a good look at them. The next group and final group for New Augusta this evening is our 8th grade Boys Basketball Team. They finished as MIC champions this year. Had some adversity coming into the season. They lost their two leading scorers from last year off of a really good team. A lot of people questioned, you know, how they might fare this year. But they came out, they had a better record this year. And they finished their season in the last game of the year, defeating a team in Belzer who was going, who was trying to accomplish being undefeated for two straight years. So that's how they finished their season and claimed the MIC championship. They also will all be at Pike next year, so we're very happy about that. We also are missing quite a few of them to track tonight, but there are some here to represent. First, Success Akani, Santos Cruz, Braden Doakes. Shannon Gant, Ethan Mohammed, Jayon Payne, Ernest Shanklin, Bennett Sigmund. William Turner. Anthony Whedon. Jeremiah White and Cassanova Williams.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board, and Dr. Young. Thank you very much for this opportunity. This is one of our favorite things to do. Congrats to all those middle school athletes. Can't wait to have you at Pike High School. This is just an opportunity for us to celebrate our winter athletes. I always say this, but I think a constant reminder is necessary that our kids compete against the best in the state, in our conference and in our county, day in and day out. So when we celebrate all conference, all county, all sectional, all regional, they really are the best of the best. And when I look at our list of athletes and think about how they are academically as well, I just couldn't be more proud. So it is a pleasure for us to work with you. We see a lot of parents here tonight. It's been a pleasure for us to work with you. For those of you who are graduating, we will definitely miss you but are super excited about your future. I'm going to call up our coaches so that they can briefly introduce our athletes and share their accolades, beginning with our Girls Wrestling Coach. And I will say this, and some of you, you can come on up, Leslie. Some of you may or may not be aware, this is the first ever, the IHSAA just sanctioned girls wrestling this year, first ever girls wrestling program at Pike High School led by Leslie Morales Torres, a Pike High School graduate. She's done a great job.
All right. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board, and Dr. Young. So this night, I have an exceptional young lady that I would like to present to you. Her name is Coriana Edwards. You can come up, Coriana. Coriana Edwards had an amazing season, first season, should I say. She's also a freshman. She's a Marion County champion. She's also a MIC champion and a sectional champion. And this season, she went 20 and one for her first season. She had a very great time with her teammates, and she was a great asset to the team as well, so.
She mentioned she was a freshman, right? 20 and one, first year ever. Next up, I'd like to present to you our Aquatics Director and Head Swimming and Diving Coach to present both the girls and boys swimming and diving team, Mr. Charles Grace.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board, and Dr. Young. I get the great honor to present to you the men's and women's swimming and diving programs here at Pike High School. A few acclimates from our girls team this year, finishing third in a county championship meet and finishing runners-up at our sectional meet and also the MIC conference this year. Having wonderful state qualifiers in Angelina Michael in the 50 freestyle and Kamiley King in the 200 and 500 freestyle. In addition, qualifying two of three relays with our 200 medley relay and our 200 freestyle relay. In addition, beyond their work athletically, academically, having a team GPA of 3.574 is having them honored at the national level from the National Interscholastic High School Swim Coaches Association as well. So great in and out of the water. So I present to you our Lady Red Devils, Emerson Allen. Aaron Bider. Florrie Boslett. Madison Crane. Molly Gordon. Kamiley King. Maggie Manahan. Angelina Michael. Marie Riley. Georgia Sucheki. And Anna Velasquez. And now to our gentlemen. Pretty similarly, third at the county championship meet, second at the MIC, second intersectional. We have one individual state qualifier this year in Rowan Daisy in the 50 freestyle, while also qualifying our 200 and 400 freestyle relays. Beyond that, we have four school records broken this year. Liam Garrity in the 200 freestyle, Rowan Daisy in the 50 freestyle, and the 200 and 400 freestyle relays of Liam Garrity, Rowan Daisy, Abe Durlich, and Sam Durlich this year. Just like the girls, our boys work hard out of the water as well. Their team GPA of 3.492 also gathers them a national award from NISCAs as well. We also have three seniors that qualify for the highest NISCAC academic All-American Award, which is also a cumulative GPA of 3.75 or higher. And Abe Durlich, Leo Hunian, and Nathan Concepcion. And now our boys, Nathan Concepcion. Zion Crowder. Ryder Daisy. Rowan Daisy. Ryan Dorsey. Abe Durlich. Sam Durlich. Liam Garrity. Leo Hunian. And Campbell Manahan.
At the risk of sounding cliche, they really are making waves in the pool. Making a splash. But truly, the excitement coming from the Aquatic Center is really exciting and contagious right now. And I don't know if you mentioned this, but the majority of those kiddos are coming back next year. Next up, we want to celebrate our boys wrestlers. And I don't think I saw a coach, I just want to make sure. So I am going to introduce them. I can't coach wrestling, nor do you want me to. But we do have three awesome young men to present to you, all conference, all county, and a semi-state qualifier. We've got Manuel Akadija. Brevin Cannon. And Ayumi Daada. All right. Next up, Boys Basketball Head Coach, Jeff Teague.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board, and Dr. Young. At this time, I'd like to present, we had three guys that made all county, all state, or all MIC. Only two are here, but Damon Howard made those teams too, by Isaiah Hill. And Jahari Miller. They're both sophomores, so they'll be coming back, so we're really excited about next year.
And the last but certainly not least program and coach that we want to recognize this evening brought a lot of excitement. evening brought a lot of excitement to our school and community this past winter. It has been a super fun season. Keith Hollins, girls basketball.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board and Dr. Young. At this time, I would like to first thank everyone for your support this season. It was great for our run, but we've got unfinished business. Again, with our team, we won sectional, regionals. We had a lot of awards. I know I only got two minutes, but our girls won a lot of awards, so I ain't going to name them all. But from a team GPA standpoint, we were 3.32 as a team this year. And as you already know, we definitely have a lot of girls that are missing, that are out of town right now, getting ready to showcase, sorry. Get ready to showcase just to the country and so they can get scholarships. A lot of these girls right here that I'm about to name, they're going to be on the road tomorrow, getting ready to showcase their skills nationally. So I'll go ahead and, at this time, I would like to present Morgan Anderson. Kamari Booker. Alana Devine. One of our seniors, Nadia Figures, who is undecided for college right now. She does have a couple offers, she'll be making her decision real soon. Marley Jeffers. Another senior, Sophia Ligon, she would be going to Fisk University, HBCU. Jayla Miller. Jaslyn Miller. Alyssa Nichols. Corinne Nicholson. Another senior, Simone Rethlin, who will be at the IU University Columbus. Sanaya Smith. Janaya Tyler. Danaya Warren. First, and I want to also thank you to our coaches who are here tonight, Dave Barlow and Sabrina Williams.
Yeah, that's it.
They gone, man.
Yeah. Well, hey, that's why I'm going to take that pole before they go.
Well, you succeeded at what you were trying to do.
No, I got something.
I know you do. You feel better now? This is a major surgery.
Can I move my seat?
Yeah, I'll make sure we get that done next time. Yeah, I want it to be hot. I want her sleep moving.
All right. Congratulations again to all of our athletes on a good job well done. Next, we'll move on to our action items. Action item A, minutes of the Board of Education regular meeting, April 10th.
I move we accept the minutes as presented?
Second.
Second.
First and a second, we'll move on to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have human resource report, Dr. Hunter. Due to the confidentiality of the human resource report, we won't entertain any questions or comments.
Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Young, I ask that you approve the HR report as presented.
So moved.
Second.
First and a second, we'll move on to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Hunter.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have request approval to apply for the IDOE 25-26 K-12 robotics competition grant, Mr. Eman.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board and Dr. Young. Seeking approval for action item C, request approval to apply for the Indiana Department of Education 25-26 K-12 robotics competition grant as presented.
So moved.
Second.
First and a second, are there any questions or comments?
Um, I just have one comment. I will be abstaining from this vote because one of the contracts involves a company that my wife works for.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Hooper. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll move on to vote. All in favor for actions items D, E, and F, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Foster.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Lastly, we have board member comments, Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am just excited tonight to see our student athletes and how they have achieved this year. We've had a great sports program this year. We look forward, I think the closest thing we have next year is our girls becoming state champs. And so we hope that that will be accomplished. Coach Hollen has done an outstanding job and he needs to be commended for that. And we're just excited for our student athletes and all that they are doing. And it's good to hear that some of them are going to be pursuing athletics and a higher education. That's phenomenal. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Ms. Wilson.
Uh, yes, again, I'm excited to be here and all the ones that showed up. And it's great to have the enthusiasm that Coach Hollen brings with his girls. I experienced it, enjoyed every minute of it on the edge of my seat. And I hope that next time we won't have to be, we'll just blow everybody out because with those new eighth graders that we're bringing, we're going to bring it. And it's going to be great. I also want to take my hat off to Justin Sanders. I watched that baby grow up from Fishback to New Augusta to Pike. He and my daughter both graduated together and it's just great to see, as he said, he was a class clown. In the class, out of the clown, out of the class, and at home. But it's great to know that you can be a clown and still be on your own business because that's what Mr. Sanders is doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Mr. Hooper.
Uh, yeah, as has already been said, you know, congratulations to all of the student athletes. I love hearing how amazing they're doing in the classroom as much as on the field and just so proud of them, the work that they're doing. Wanted to thank Mr. Burkhardt and the musicians who had the chance to go to the Pike Jazz Cafe last Tuesday. If you missed it, you missed the best jazz club in all of Indianapolis. It was great. They, it's just amazing how talented our kids are. And unfortunately, I didn't write down the young man's last name, but the final number that they performed was composed by one of the students. And so it was just a lot of fun and really impressive. I also wanted to point out, and I'm going to apologize if I butcher the names, but Anaya Delmore and Abby Walker, who are heading to the DECA International Career Development Conference down in Florida, I believe that's this weekend, if I read everything right. And so just want to congratulate them and wish them luck this weekend down there. And really wanted to congratulate Mr. Heck on his impromptu technology fixes there. That was impressive.
Thank you, Mr. Hooper. Dr. Webster.
Thank you, Mr. President. I got a chance this past Monday to attend the Sports Mental Health Summit. And I mean, the information was phenomenal. In fact, board members now have a book by Mr. Flash Gordon. Information was phenomenal. In fact, Dr. Moore, he taught in such a way that in another world, as a pastor, it caused me to look at my staff, my leadership, and how I'm doing, and even going back to do some things as relates to the mental capacity of people in general. What a phenomenal conference, summit. Where I was disappointed at, very, 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 very disappointed, is that I walked across the campus on my way in and we had so many athletes outside catching buses, just getting out of activities that they were doing, and just standing on campus ground. And we get inside to the conference, the summit itself, and I counted 20, 20 athletes, 16 athletes, and probably four or five parents, and probably a good three coaches. And to be quite honest, that's unacceptable. And the reason why it's unacceptable, it's because the board passes and gives their approval of an event such as that, and we had caliber folk coming, and not to be slighted in no kind of way, and especially African-American men who a lot of times we own the low poll and the petroleum poll on everything. And these two men was at the apex of their profession. And to have such a low turnout, it bothered me. And so I asked Mr. Anderson, "Mr. Anderson, can I say something?" I told him about that. And I wanted to take that poll, maybe there was a reason for it. And I asked the parents tonight, as you saw, and I asked student athletes tonight, as you saw, how many were aware. So somewhere, someone dropped the ball, and I hope and pray that even if we do this next year, the board will come together and perhaps decide, maybe we can give some time to, during the day. But this needs to be, this was a event that I felt our gymnasium should have been packed. In fact, Mr. Gordon said to me, he said, "A district decides," he said, "I expected at least 300 folk." This is Mr. Gordon, one of the presenters. And so I wanted to make that known publicly because to me, it was quite embarrassing as a board member. When I tell you embarrassing, it was embarrassing. And I want us to know that, and I hope next year we can do a better job of promoting and getting others involved. Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Dr. Webster. Mrs. Barnes.
Uh, first I want to start off with, I attended the food insecurity documentary screening and panel discussion with other community leaders, including representatives from Central Indiana Community Foundation and Gleaner's Food Bank. As your school board member, I learned quite a bit about what it means to be food insecure, what causes it, what are some things that we can do as citizens to mitigate that for our neighbors who are struggling. So that's something I'll certainly be sharing with the board later. I know we have efforts in this area with our pantry and other things that we're, other partnerships that we're kind of looking at. So it's certainly something to me that is important, that we have a better understanding of what it is. And I would certainly recommend that documentary. Again, it's called Food Insecure, just to get a deep dive into what does that really mean. Following that, so this was all last week, I also attended as representative at our District Wellness Council meeting. Dr. Shelley Barkat shared the straight A's in wellness success, which are affordable, inefficient, accessible, and multi-specialty, at-home care plus clinical care, and then all of the above. So I really enjoyed that piece of information from her. Giving you an update at our schools, Mr. Gruber and his team are working with each school to prepare garden boxes so that the students can begin planting. These plants that they are receiving were donated by our neighbor right up the street, Cortiva, or maybe it's Corteva. Every school in Pike Township has now applied for America's Healthiest Schools, and that's through the Alliance of a Healthier Generation. If you recall, last year, we gathered quite a few awards, and we didn't even have every school apply last year. So I'm excited to see what kind of honors that our schools will receive for our efforts in wellness. Don't forget that the fifth grade field day is on May 9th, and, there's a visual here. Take one of those, pass it down. I invite all my fellow board members to go to the Red Devil Dash, no dashing required. You can saunter, you can stroll if you want, but please come out, support our district initiative, and join me at the Red Devil Dash.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Barnes. Ms. Kelly.
All right. Good evening. Glad to be here. Just want to continue us to encourage, we have like four weeks of school. So I'm thinking from perspective of, yes, I'm ready for school to be done, but also how much curriculum there still is to cover in that four weeks. And so, but wanting to finish strong, encouraging our staff, our students, our community, finish strong and prepare for a healthy, safe summer. And I did want to congratulate again, as has been said, our scholar athletes. Thank you to those who have donated to our district and help keep our students supplied with the things that we need. And then also, I'd like to recognize Dr. Sanders as an outstanding alum coming from Pike. We have grown many, many, many great alums, and looking forward to even, as was mentioned earlier in the meeting, getting additional information on the alums that we'll be honoring in May. So let's finish strong.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Dr. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to congratulate our student athletes, coaches, and volunteers for a wonderful winter sports and academic season. Last week, we celebrated the arts on, with our biannual evening with the arts. This year, we added the culinary arts. It was a great turnout, and what has already been mentioned, I agree wholeheartedly, our students are very, very talented. This past Monday, we also celebrated and had our National Honor Society Ceremony. We had 106 sophomores and juniors that were inducted into the National Hall of Fame, uh, National, excuse me, Honor Society. So congratulations to all of those students and their families. Thank you to Dr. Justin Sanders. If you're listening, Dr. Sanders, we appreciate you for being a great example of what a Pike graduate looks like. We are so proud of you and keep doing great work because there are people that are coming behind you that are looking at your success, and they want to be just like you. Last but not least, this past, matter of fact, it was just yesterday, was National Administrative Assistant Day. And I want to publicly thank all MSDA Pike Township Administrative Assistants for helping to ensure the success of the district. Obviously, I want to take this time and opportunity to offer a special thanks to none other than Ms. Pettiford, who does such a great drive. Me and the administration.
Thank you, Dr. Young. In closing, I just want to, again, I'm so proud of our student athletes, but more specifically to their grade point average. It's good to hear that not only sports, but academics is just as important here at Pike Township. Also, again, another shout out to Lori. What you see up here is not because of us. Lori keeps us on track. And so without her and our other administrative assistants, I thank you all for the work that you do. And since we don't have a board meeting next week, and May is one of my favorite months of the year because it is also a look at mental health month, it's recognize mental health. And that is something that the board is very critical of and that we hold in high regard, high regard. So we know that Superintendent, you lead this great district, and to his staff, you know, the board, we thank you very much for what you do, and we want you to know that we want you to take care of yourselves, especially mentally, and leave it to the board. We will make sure that we create a culture and a climate.
was National Administrative Assistant Day. And I want to publicly thank all MSD of Pike Township Administrative Assistants for helping to ensure the success of the district. Obviously, I want to take this time and opportunity to offer a special thanks to none other than Ms. Pettiford, who does such a great drive.
Thank you, Dr. Young. In closing, I just want to, again, I'm so proud of our student athletes, but more specifically to their grade point average. It's good to hear that not only sports but academics is just as important here at Pike Township. Also, again, another shout out to Lori. What you see up here is not because of us. Lori keeps us on track. And so without her and our other administrative assistants, I thank you all for the work that you do. And since we don't have a board meeting next week, and May is one of my favorite months of the year because it is also a look at mental health month, recognize mental health. And that is something that the board is very critical of and that we hold in high regard. So we know that superintendent, you lead this great district, and to his staff, you know, the board, we thank you very much for what you do. And we want you to know that we want you to take care of yourselves, especially mentally, and leave it to the board. We will make sure that we create a culture and a climate so that you can work conducively and productively. And we'll keep that culture going. All right, with that being said, I get the motion to adjourn the meeting. So moved, Mr. President.